Hillsborough Township Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 6, 2016 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Dutt?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a form.
We have a form. I'd like to read a motion to go into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the law of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association, an employee grievance hearing, and an employee matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we're going to executive session. We'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you. Okay, thank you, and welcome to the October 10, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. We're back from executive session. So, I'll call to order the open meeting in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of the meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided October 6, 2016 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dutt?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a form.
We have a form. If we could stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to read a joint statement on behalf of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Association. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education, the BOE, and Hillsborough Education Association, or the HEA, are pleased to announce that they have reached a tentative agreement for a new three-year contract covering the period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019. The tentative agreement was reached at a negotiation sessions between the party on October 4th that went into October 5th. The agreement is subject to document preparation and ratification of the contract by both parties. Salary guides will be established, and then the agreement will be presented to the HEA membership for ratification. The agreement would then be presented to the school board for ratification. Details of the tentative agreement will not be made public until after the proposed agreement is approved by the HEA and BOE. The BOE and HEA negotiation committee chairs would like to thank both negotiation teams for their hard work and dedication in achieving the settlement. Thank you. And now I'll hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Wow. Evening. It's my pleasure to be able to share some wonderful news from around the district with the Board of Education and the community this evening. Hillsborough High School teacher Faith White's submission entitled "Basque Harbor Maine" was recently accepted into the 2016 National Art Education Association Membership Exhibition. Faith's piece will be on exhibit from October 1st through April 21st, 2017, at the NAEA Office and Gallery in Alexandria, Virginia. Congratulations, Faith. Congratulations also goes out to Hillsborough High School Dakota Seidel. At the September 29 Raider Field Hockey game against Montgomery, Dakota scored two goals, including the game-winning goal in overtime, as Hillsborough defeated Montgomery 2 to 1 in Skilman. Dakota was named one of NJ.com's Three Stars for Thursday, September 29th, for her performance. Congratulations, Dakota. At this time, I'd like to shift gears and talk about our spotlight on students. Each month, we try to showcase some wonderful things that are going on throughout the district. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from Ms. Suzanne Radwan, our Director of Special Services, about our extended school year program. Ms. Radwan.
Tonight, I'd like to highlight the successful Extended School Year, or ESY, program that the Department of Special Services ran this summer for six weeks from July 5th to August 12th. Let me start by saying that, as you know, this summer was my first summer as the Director for Special Services here in Hillsborough, and I have to say that there was no better way to enter this district than to walk into the well-operated operation that I came into this summer for the ESY program. It was evident from the day I began that the students were actively engaged in meaningful instruction with the support of our dedicated staff members and all while having fun in doing so. So this summer, we served 263 students with disabilities. 189 of them were from the ages of 5 to 21, and we had the privilege of servicing 74 of our youngest learners in our preschool program. Over the course of the summer, our students worked on maintaining their academic skills in the areas of reading, writing, math, and social emotional skills. While some of our students worked with speech therapists to focus on language and communication skills, other students worked with occupational and physical therapists that focused on ensuring the fine and gross motor development of our students. These services were provided through a variety of formats. Some therapies were pushed into the classroom, some were provided in small groups, and thanks to our skilled clinicians, some of our students received their therapies in their natural setting, such as on the playground, throughout the school building, and on their class trip. While every day was filled with academic rigor, student engagement, and high-quality instruction, there was ample opportunity for our students with disabilities to socialize and meet new peers from other buildings that they would not otherwise have the opportunity to meet. It was truly a powerful experience for our students and one they should feel proud of. Some of the highlights from the summer ESY program included weekly trips to ShopRite for our high school students who participate in our community work program. Prior to going to ShopRite, our students would survey our ESY teachers and generate a shopping list of supplies that were needed to service our students. Under the leadership of our ESY teachers, our students went shopping for the items, paying close attention to price comparisons, and then successfully purchased the items at the register. Upon return to the ESY program, our students sorted and disseminated the items to our teachers. We are very proud of our students' accomplishments and appreciate their contribution to our ESY program, as they are working towards their transition into adulthood. We also had the opportunity to take our students in grades K through 12 to a sensory-friendly trip to Hillsborough Cinema to see the Secret Life of Pets. During the showing of the film, the sound was lowered and the lights were dimmed, as the objective of the trip was to help desensitize our students to the movie experience and to generalize communication and social skills in a public setting. And lastly, our annual school supply drive was once again a success. The families of the students participating in the ESY program generously donated school supplies, which were in turn donated to the Hillsborough Food Pantry. The students in Mrs. Vogel's class, who are going into 5th and 6th grade, organized the drive and went to the food pantry to deliver the supplies. According to Mrs. Vogel, one student summed it up as we headed back to the high school by saying, "It feels great to help some students in Hillsborough have an awesome start to their school year." We'd like to thank all of the staff who worked the summer program, as well as Hillsborough Township Public Schools, Building and Ground staff, Technology Department, Transportation Department, High School Administration and Custodial staff, and the 150 student volunteers we had that made the program such a success. And we could not do this without the support of our Board of Education and District Administration, so we thank you. Additionally, we'd like to thank the parents for giving us the opportunity to work with their children over the summer. We truly look forward to an ESY 2017. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Radwan. Is there any questions from Board members about the extended school year program? It's really a wonderful place. I always enjoy visiting over the summer, and it's not only remarkable what we're doing with what and for those children, but to have 150 student volunteers to participate in it is quite remarkable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is a question here.
So my son was involved in your program, and he was there for the last three weeks for reading, and it really gave him courage to actually stand up this fall and read to his class for the first time.
That's great.
So, thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to shift gears as part of our legal responsibility. Whenever we administer a state assessment and we receive the results, we need to report on those results within 60 days of receipt. This is a presentation that I will turn over to my colleague, Dr. Antunes, about the Park 2016 results that we received this summer. Dr. Antunes?
I'm not sure I can compete with the ESY program, but we're going to try, because our students did pretty well here, too. So, as Dr. Schiff said, we have to do this. This is a state mandate. So, the program will be online, and of course, if anybody has any questions at any time, they can reach out to me, and I can do whatever I can to help answer those questions. So, 2016 was the second administration of Park, and I don't think anybody thought the state would get through the first administration. But we did it pretty seamlessly, and we did it even better last school year. And I'm very confident that this school year, it'll be even better. Our teachers did what they needed to do. They felt much more comfortable this year than they did the previous year, and it showed. Everybody was not as nervous about it. So, students take Park in English Language Arts Literacy, that looks like ELA/L, in grades 3 through 11. And for mathematics, they take an assessment in grades 3 through 8, and then it's still Park, but they call them end-of-course assessments for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. There are five performance levels for Park, from Level 1, meaning that grade expectations are not quite met, through Level 5, exceeding grade level expectations, and everything in between, Levels 2, 3, and 4. What we're targeting are meeting grade level expectations. That's what we're looking for in our students. We're looking for Level 4. If we don't get Level 4, then we try to discover why we didn't reach a Level 4 or 5, and that's part of the job that we do when we get the results. So, it's, there's a lot of, there are a lot of numbers on this page, so let me try to explain what you're seeing. You have each grade level on the left. Across the top, you're comparing two years, last year, 2015, and then in bold, 2016, for each of the levels, Levels 1 through 5. The last four columns are, let's see, columns, the third and fourth from the right talk about district percentage greater than Level 4 for each of the two years, and then New Jersey's percentage greater than Level 4. So, overall, across the board, we saw an increase in our students meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. So, we saw a decrease in the number or the percentage of students not yet meeting expectations or partially meeting expectations. If you look at us compared, us meeting Hillsborough Township compared to New Jersey, across the board, we have seen an increase in our students who met or exceeded the expectations as set forth for English Language Arts Literacy at each grade level. In Grade 11, you will see a decrease as met or exceeded Level 4 for New Jersey. I'm sorry. No, yes, that is correct. So, that tells us something. Across the state, for Grade 11, less students performed, or students performed less well than they did the previous year. In Grade 11, we don't count students who take IAP classes, and also International Baccalaureate, which we don't have in Hillsborough, but across the state they have that. They do not include those students in this. So, those numbers are a little different across the state. If we take a look at this in a visual capacity, you will see that Hillsborough is the blue and New Jersey is the green. So, it's exactly the same results that were on the chart, but in a visual, so that you can see very clearly how as each, we exceed New Jersey across the board, but you can also see how, just like the state, we are following in that same trend as students get older. There are a variety of reasons for that. As I stated, Grade 11 has some students who don't test because they're in AP classes, so those students don't have to test. However, again, you can see very clearly that Hillsborough exceeds the standards that set by New Jersey. If we take a look at the next slide, we're looking at mathematics scores. So again, the bold is 2016 for each grade level, and then each level of expectation. The last two columns indicate New Jersey's, the number of, the percentage of students exceeding Level 4 or above for New Jersey, and the two next to that are Hillsborough. And again, you will see that across the board, we have increased our percentage of students who met or exceeded the expectations. For Grade 8, students can take any number, they can take the Grade 8 Park assessment, or a student may take the Algebra I assessment, or in some cases, the student may take the Geometry assessment. A student only takes one assessment. He or she does not take Grade 8 and Algebra I, or Grade 8 and Geometry. So, students only take one of those assessments. So, that too, across the board, across the state, the numbers are often lower. If you look at the visual for mathematics, again, you will see that in all grade levels, Hillsborough exceeds, meets, or exceeds the standards set forth as compared to New Jersey. The next chart shows the number of valid scores that we received last year and this year across each grade level. The number there that's important is the bottom line number, the total. Last year, we had 4,141 students with valid scores. In 2016, we had 4,569 students. Again, a variety of reasons for this. What's important to us is that this tells us that we had perhaps less students refused to test, which is important as a district because it meets the federal requirement of having to have students test, and so for us, that was an important number. Did we meet the participation requirement across the board? No, we did not. But we did see increase, an increase in the number of students who did take the assessment. And in mathematics, we also saw an increase in the number of students who took the assessment, from 3,927 in 2015 to 4,399 in 2016. I do want to point out that in order for a score to be considered valid, and the state defines this for us, a student has to answer one question. That's what makes the assessment valid. That is it. No other validity studies are done. This is not a Hillsborough thing. This is a state Park thing. So, again, the point is that we had more students assessed. So, how do we utilize the data that we do receive from Park? And there are so, we got it earlier this year, so that was really good from the state. They promised it to us, and we did receive much of the data earlier. And so, we take a look at that. We take a look at the gaps that may exist in our curriculum, and we take care of that. We use it as a tool to decide, well, hmm, we did really well here. How much time are we spending? And we didn't do so well here. Do we need to spend some time there? Sometimes, we look to see where the topic showed up in the curriculum. Maybe it shows up too late. Maybe we need to move it closer to the beginning or middle of the school year as opposed to after testing. So those are some of the things that we look at for each content area. And while we test in English Language Arts and Mathematics, many of the content in the reading for English Language Arts and Mathematics are social studies-based and science-based. So those are all things that we look at when we receive the results. And then we talk about how we can provide additional resources for our teachers to meet the learning needs of our students. And our content area supervisors and our building-based administrators all work together to determine what's necessary. Parents have many resources. On our website, we have a Park portion of the website that have active links that parents can go on and take a look. There are questions that parents can try to answer, and good luck, some of them are very difficult. And it also talks about how you can read the score reports. There are some translations on there, and the links are also in the presentation. Everybody whose child was assessed last year ought to have received the individual student report very, at the very beginning of the school year, or if not, in August, for your child. If you have not received an individual student report and you know your child tested, reach out to the principal, and we should get that information to you. You may remember last, let's see, maybe September 28th or 29th, receiving a school messenger about parent notification of the standardized assessments that we are required to provide to parents. It's a new statute that came out under 18A, and this is exactly what you received via school messenger. Again, I know it's difficult to read, but this was a new requirement put forth by the state. We were given a couple of days' notice to get it out to the community, and we were able to do that, and it just outlines all of the assessments that we have to give. Not all students take all assessments. And of course, the timeframe and date ranges may be adjusted as per school, and if a student has an IEP or 504 and are provided extended time, those things are not included in here. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if the Board has any.
How about comparisons to like, school districts?
We have not received that information yet. However, Dr. Schiff did reach out to the state and ask if we would be receiving that, and we did get an indication that we would, but we haven't received it yet.
How close are we on participation rates?
It depends upon the school. We're better than we were, but we're not quite there yet overall.
And when do we have to rely?
11th grade seems to be the issue, and it continues to be the issue. We had close to 50% refusal rate two years ago. We improved upon that, yeah. We improved upon that to about 30% refusal rate.
What's the requirement?
95%.
95% is the requirement.
Only 5% refusal.
And this is new for Hillsborough, because Hillsborough has never had this issue.
Well, by now.
Yeah.
By last year.
Every year.
We had to indicate that there was a corrective action plan for the schools that did not have the participation rate that we needed. And last year, we had, I think it was three schools or four schools that did not have the participation rate.
I think it was four.
Four.
I think. I have to go back and look, and I can do that if you'd like.
There was actually one school, an elementary school, that we appealed because we, it didn't make sense the way that the data came back. We anticipate we'll do better this year, but we will fall below that rate, because you need to have 95% in each grade level within the building. So even if the aggregate was above 95, if you didn't have it per grade level, you would need to do a corrective action. So, all districts that had, and there were many, many, many districts throughout the state that needed to do corrective action. What I anticipate is that they're going to see that we have made improvements through this process, but I anticipate we'll continue to be in corrective action until we're at 95%, which had been the case for the past 15, you know, 20 years.
Even longer, yeah.
Since we've been doing standardized achievement. This was a very different year with different tests and a different response from our public because of it.
Prior to Park, we were at the 95%.
Absolutely.
Every year, all the time. That was never an issue.
Yeah.
Dr. Schiff, do you think they'll look at 11th grade across the board, because that's just going to be problematic no matter how you look at it? Most of them will not take math, and the only requirement will be English, which is not required of the current class, so you'll be in the same vote.
I anticipate that to be the case, that you're absolutely correct, that it almost disincentivizes participation on it when it doesn't count. It will start to count in the year 2021 and going into 2022, but no, not this year or next year or a couple of years after that.
And there is also a requirement, I believe it's for 2020, that students have to take it, but not necessarily pass it. And so, if students aren't taking it, that could pose a problem for them when they're ready to graduate. So, as soon as we get that information, we'll make sure everybody's aware of that as well.
And what is required to have 100%, a near 100% participation?
Everybody who's supposed to take the test assesses.
So that's not the question. The question is, what can we do to get there?
I think the best thing we could do is inform the community of the law and what our requirement is, and provide them the information they need to make an informed decision.
There was a lack of trust about this particular assessment, and there was a concerted effort by different groups and constituencies to influence members of the public not to take the test. We saw that across the state. It was historic. We've never had this type of issue in the history of standardized testing in the state of New Jersey. So, I think time helps. I think that as people receive results back, and it's meaningful to them, I think that that may help. I do think that as the new graduation requirements begin to kick in, that that is certainly going to be a significant motivator for students to perform well on it. As this body may recall, we actually, we did an analysis on our state achievement results, comparing it back 15 years on all of the student achievement data that we had, and as a result, we invalidated certain grade levels because the scores were so much different than the 15 years in the past. It indicated that either the population that took the test, which was 50% in the 11th grade, was not representative, or that the kids that did take it didn't take it seriously. So, our data's better this year in aggregate. I anticipate that we'll be able to validate all of the grades, with probably the exception of 11th grade, but we do that once we get everybody else's data, to see comparatively how well we did. Last year and in prior years, we get the comparative data around the new year, so we'll be able to make more of a determination. But we are using the data to work on developing goals, to close achievement gaps as we find them, and all of the principals, as well as the supervisors, are developing their goals, recording the problems of practice this year based upon valid test results on the 2016 Park.
So will it help, in one of the charts, you had meets and exceeds all combined together? Will it be beneficial to see how many meets, how many exceeds, and then look at what really drives that exceeds?
Yeah, we actually have, and I'll just click back to it. We have each level, 1 through 5, so we can actually look at the distribution to minimize the 1s, minimize the 2s, moves the 3s into 4s, and moves 4s into 5s, you know, that type of, that type of growth model. It helps us to understand the distribution of kids, so if we find, as we disaggregate the data, that we have a particular population that is doing extraordinarily well, we want to find out what's going on there, that we can duplicate some of those activities. And are the children that are not performing as well, do they have the necessary supports to pull them up? So, we do an analysis down to the individual student. So principals are looking at it not just at 30,000 feet, but right at ground level.
Yeah, more interested in looking at those outliers, exceeds, to see, you know, what is the profile, you know, what is it that's driving that?
Yeah.
Because if you combine it, then we might not get visibility into that.
Yeah, we try to make it very clear. We also have the scale scored mean. We actually look at what the actual scores are, not just where they are within each of five categories, too. So the granularity is right down to the skill level with this analysis. I mean, we don't present that here, but we do that administratively.
And we received the results, like, it was like at least six months earlier than the prior year.
Oh, yes.
So that's going to help, that'll help the administration be able to implement that informed instruction, and also for, and one of the issues that we had was for the graduating, the seniors, if they didn't pass, then there was much shorter time in order to address that. Now we've got a little bit more time, so.
Exactly.
It's good. Thank you. Any other questions with regard?
Yeah, that's it. Just want to wrap up on a couple of things. I also wish to extend my appreciation and congratulations to both the Board, as well as the HEA negotiating. team. Typically, people don't realize or appreciate how many hours' worth of work goes into preparing for negotiations and actually negotiating. Both sides stayed up multiple times at past 2:00 in the morning and, and one time, 3:00 in the morning. So I know that our, our members, our teachers, our support staff, our board and our community appreciate the, the tireless efforts that both negotiating teams made in order to get this tentative agreement, and we look forward to ratifying in the next few weeks. Also, just to make the, the board and the community aware, a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of testifying in front of the Education Assembly Committee on, in support of Assembly Bill 204122, which, which would eliminate the use of standardized achievement tests in the evaluation of teachers and administrators throughout the state of New Jersey. This has the effect of eliminating a particular evaluation metric that we're using in the state right now called the Median SGP, or the Median Student Growth Profile. This, this is a statistic that measures growth from one year of standardized testing to the next year of standardized testing. I and the associations that I represent, including the New Jersey Association of School Administrators, where I chair the Legislative Committee, and the Garden State Coalition of Schools, of which I'm the president, both believe that because we do not receive the statistic until nine months after the prior year, let me say that again, nine months after the year in which that person is evaluated, that it, it's disparaging as an evaluation tool and certainly doesn't improve performance. I'm aware of no research that supports that your evaluation is, has value added when a metric isn't given until nine months after you complete that, that particular evaluation. That's number one. Number two, the Median SGP is only applied to 15% of the teachers throughout this state. So 85% of the teachers throughout this state are evaluated based upon student growth objectives, which are non-standardized assessments used to measure growth from one year to the next. That's, that's what almost everybody in the state is using, but for the 15% that don't, they have this particular statistic that's not given in a timely way, plus it's overweighted. It is given another 30 points, 30 percentage points of a person's entire evaluation system. So there's two parts of a teacher and administrator's evaluation. The professional practice, which is the behavior of, of that teacher in the classroom, the professional performance, and achievement, which is student growth. For 85% of the teachers out there, 85% of their evaluation is based upon their performance. For 15% of the teachers out there, 55% of their evaluation is based on performance. This is disparate treatment between and among teachers. I feel it's just wrong, and I will continue to testify. I have another hearing date, actually tomorrow morning, at the, the Joint Committee on Public Schools, which is an Assembly and Senate Joint Committee to talk about important issues, and I look forward to, to expressing the opinion of, of both, the Garden State Coalition as well as the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Okay, now we will continue on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the October, I'm sorry, the September 26, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
Summum.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Myself.
Okay. Yeah. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to open it up, the dais to the public. And this will be for either new business or items on the action agenda. We very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now for any item that is listed on tonight's agenda or new business. There'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but are rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Before you make a comment, please state your name and address, the group affiliation as appropriate. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road School and the HEA treasurer. I just had a clarification question on the action agenda for tonight in section, I don't think I'd need to write these down, but 8.3, 9.5, 9.7, 9.9, and 9.10. Those are all either salaries or stipends, and they have the asterisk that says pending HEA negotiations. However, in 8.4 and 8.5, those are also, I don't know if they're stipends or pay, like the curriculum pay, and the other one is for some kind of assessment. There's no asterisk that says pending 2016-17 negotiations, so I just wanted to get clarification for that.
We'll make the correction.
Okay, thank you.
So obviously, if there's a change that affects any of the rates that we made.
Yeah, and anything that has to do with the, what's either on a time sheet or certainly what, what's on the, what's on the salaries will need to be adjusted.
I'm going to screw you all over, this is basically how we do things.
Doing my due diligence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was a joke.
Any other public comment? Okay, continuing on, let's move to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Kents. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve traveling-related expenses, to affirm the superintendent's decisions, to approve stipends for the LEAP program, also the world language, teachers accelerated testing, curriculum writing, and policies for second reading as listed and as reported out of our prior meeting, approve regulations for second reading, and that's all.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.7 of the action agenda.
Summum.
Second. Okay. Okay, any discussion? I have, I have a question with regard to 8.4. It says it's to acceleration testing. If you can just describe that, and then I have some questions about, is there a limit? How much time is expected, those different types of things? Thank you.
Sure. So that's for new students who enter into the district, who we need to determine which level of, which level they're in before we can place them. And so we don't have a lot of those kinds of students, so we don't know which language or which level, so that's why we typically will approve all the teachers, but it's very few. We don't have a ton of kids coming in. But this way, then, we don't wait for another board meeting, and then we don't know where this child is, where, you know, we don't wait for the lag time.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any other questions? For item 8.5, with the social studies curriculum writing, is, what's the updates for that?
Sure. What this actually is, is when the governor put in place the New Jersey Standards for Learning, and he moved from the Common Core to the New Jersey Standards for Learning, there were a couple of things that needed to be adjusted, mostly numbers that needed to be adjusted, and so that's what that, that's why it's so little. That's what that's about.
All right. Okay, thanks. And then lastly, for 8.3, if we can get, I think this is our third year of doing this, after, after we complete that process, if we can have a report out to the Education Committee so that we can assess if this is something that we still want to continue or, or, you know, how effective it is and, and those types of things, that would be great. Great, thank you. Any other, any other questions with regard to 8.1 through 8.7? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kents. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve for second readings the policies as listed, the suspension of a staff member, the resignations and retirements. Also, I'd, I'd like to highlight Suzanne Rhodes, who's been a special education teacher with us over at the middle school since 2001, Gigi Ryan, who was, who is a computer teacher here at Hillsborough High School. She's been working with us since 1980, and Karen Siegel, occupational therapist over in Triangle, who's been working with us since 2005. And I thank each of them for their, their service to our students and our community. Also, to approve the leaves of absences as listed, the revised co-curricular advisors, to rescind the contracts as listed, and to approve the appointments of custodians, co-curricular advisors, intramural advisors, SAT coordinators and substitutes, to approve the student teachers as listed, the pre-approved extra period coverage, and approve the extra period coverage.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.10 of the action agenda.
Summum.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. And finally, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve the Uniform Statement Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement, to approve the policies for second reading as listed, and approve a settlement agreement.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.3 of the action agenda.
Summum.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seth Defonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great, thank you. Now we'll, that ends the action agenda. I'd like to open up the dais for comments from the public, if there is any. Okay, seeing none? Any announcements, comments from the board members?
Oh, the world language. We instituted the sign language class. Did we get much in the way of registered students?
A couple of sections.
Oh, really? Oh, that's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. That's spectacular. Awesome. No, I mean, we did something right here, no?
Okay, thank you. All right, we have informational, as is listed in the agenda, and now I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, we adjourn.[1800.13]